All right, it is seven P M. We will call the city council meeting to order if we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doing roll call, all voting members are present. We will open up the floor for public comment tonight, and tonight we will again have the three-minute time limit, and please keep your public comment to city-related business and not personal or political attacks. If there's anybody that would like to come forward and speak tonight, you're more than welcome. Come on up and just state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you for coming in.
Hi, my name is Pat Sundberg.
Can you pick up the microphone, please? Yes, thank you.
Can you tell me when I'm two and a half seconds?
Sounds good.
My name's Pat Sundberg, and I'm a fifty-four-year-old resident, fifty-four-year resident of Isani. Twenty-five-plus years is Main Street Isani where I raised my kids, and I love Isani. I now just live out on County Road Five. Did I say that already? I live on County Road Five, east of Town Four, a whole miles. I'm here because I love Isani. It's always been supportive of the citizens and the parks and the schools. And I have heard nothing for the past year but bad comments on the city council. So I wanted to come and see what you were like, because it's not fair not to to say anything if you've never seen anything. Well, I did meet one person. I met the mayor. We were at the tour of the appalling tour of the Isani Primary School. And he saw and heard all the desperate needs that they have. But he he did participate in the vote no campaign. I, when I came to, I've been here to two meetings, and the two of them were short, a couple people, but it was understandable. And there's not a whole lot of discussion at those meetings, but I'm trusting that there has been in the past. I know that we have a four-hundred-thousand park fund money that can only be used for park funds. And I just read that the liquor store just gave you two million dollars since twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. I believe that was what on Facebook today, and I'm not part of the Isani Cambridge Facebook people or the Cambridge Isani Facebook, just so that you know. I'm not picking up information from there. I I'm disappointed that you're dragging your feet on the parks. We did Matson Park. We did a walking path of the town. We did the basketball courts, and now we have people coming with money and plans and willing to work. And you have no splash pad. You're dragging your feet on the pickleball court. The guys that were here fifteen years waiting for that bike pack or bike thing that they were going to do last month. And it's the illuminate Isani. It's it's very disappointing that a city that I love is somehow not reflecting that they too love the city. I, in the last meeting, you discussed how you would, and I see you're going to do it tonight, you were discussing on contracting employees. So you don't have to pay for their paid leave. But I see it's on the agenda now. I see you don't you don't fly the Minnesota flag. I don't hear of any vision for the future. And I'm hoping that, and I'm trusting you, because you ran for office, you're here, so you must have some concern for all the people in Isani. If they're preschool, if they're home schooled like the mayor's kids, if they're going to the public school and want to just live here and enjoy all the park space that we have. So that's what I have to say. Good luck. But people are watching you, and people are talking about you, and you do not have a positive image right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else for public comment tonight? And I would just like to state that I I don't have kids, so I don't have home schooled kids. Illuminated Isani, we're still having that and hosting that. We've just allocated our resources in a more efficient way. We're trying to provide every amenity we can at the most affordable price for everybody, so it just takes long-term planning sometimes. Okay. Come on up, yeah. Anybody else? Just state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, hi, Todd Christensen, County Commissioner, District Four. I was just going to say that I don't I don't have any other updates for you since our last last time talking. I am looking into, you know, with Justin there about perhaps what we can do down here by the schools that were the for the traffic on the road there, County Road Five. But I was also going to say, though, that, you know, as representing the city of Isani, if you guys ever have any questions county-related or whatever, feel free to reach out to me directly, you know, I'm my number and stuff is online, so that's all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment tonight? Come on up. State your name and address for the record, please. Thank you for coming in.
Hello, I'm Aaron Zedon, seven oh nine Bergman Court, excuse me. I'm just here to thank the council for approving Phase One of the skate park. I think if you were at the last meeting, they did approve Phase One, which is awesome. Got to start somewhere. And that was park dedication funds. As I think some of you have seen, I've kind of been patrolling the Facebook, because there's so many people like, you're raising my taxes. But trying to just dispel the rumors and the, you know, falsehoods that it's park dedication funds, the money exists, exists, there's no new fees, no new taxes. So most people don't understand how that fund works, so. So I've been patrolling it pretty good.
Thank you for that.
Yep, so, yeah, tons of positive feedback on that. I know that that's all sorted, and David with with Ramp Arts will be up here in the next week to start already on the existing equipment. And he's been coordinating with Josh. And then people are super excited about the pickleball courts. Josh is working on that and the pickleball association. I'm pretty confident that that can get down definitely under the one seventy-five.
And that was the goal.
Yeah, exactly. Probably, you know, I'm not going to guess numbers, but I think that can definitely get down, get a few more bids, and there's some tweaking that can be done on that, too. So and then illuminated Isani gets going great, and the city wrapped all the light poles. It looks amazing already just driving through there. So they'll be starting to light that up pretty soon here, too, so.
Awesome.
I'm got my hands in all three of those things, so.
So do you think it's been going smooth?
And the BMX track.
Do you think it's been going smooth with the rollout of the lights, displays and everything between?
Yeah, definitely. That 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 Isani Together group is amazing. I mean, they're like phenomenal volunteers. I mean, they used to run the Skowls way back when my boys were in Skowls, and it's a really good group, and Erica is pretty good, too, so.
And I've been really excited about that personally, because we can provide a service and the community gets to volunteer and build a sense of community while not spending taxpayer monies to do it, so.
Yeah, yeah, and then my BMX team, we're going to cover one night, like we've done the last three years, so.
Cool.
There, I think they've got most of the nights covered for volunteers.
Awesome.
Santa and all that good stuff, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for the update. Thank you for your work.
Phase Two is coming.
Sounds good.
All right.
I know I like that.
Keep looking for grants.
I'm with you.
Oh, so I have our, and I did see Commissioner at the Lions thing, so I've reached out to the Lions to try to do some fundraising for the skate park. And maybe get a couple benches donated, because they do park benches. And then if we can get a Q R code going for that and pickleball, I guarantee I'll be the first donation, so.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I want to kind of add something that's it's been brought to my attention. In some cities, Cambridge does this a lot, in the summer, they put up flowers on all the streetlights. I don't know who's watering them, but it's, you know, it's it's a task.
It is.
And I know, you know, that it's been brought to my attention that they wish that would come back, because we used to do that years ago. And I I'm assuming we're putting up Christmas stuff on the streetlights now.
It's already up.
Yeah, I didn't pay attention. I don't, but I I do, like I said, people like seeing those things. I know that when we did the senior signs on it, I'll tell you something, I had people rave about it. That was a great idea. And I think that's one way of giving back to this community is to show that, you know, we do care about our future people.
Sounds good. Any other public comment tonight? You're welcome to come forward. Hearing none, we will close the public comment. We will move on to item E, adopting the agenda. Are there any changes tonight, Ms. Wood?
I have one modification that was made before today, which, I'm sorry, was made today, which was to add item L three, resolution to approve the offer of maintenance technician two to Jeff Pankin. That was a late addition, so I just want to point that out.
Okay. Sounds good. Any other changes or issues?
Add a item.
Okay.
The employee carry policy change.
Okay, where would we add that to?
K three.
Item K three, okay. Is that allowable, Ms. Wood?
It is if you vote part.
Okay. Any other changes or do we want to vote on that specifically or?
I didn't I didn't know we really had to vote on it. I thought we.
I thought we were going to package it with all the other policies.
But we have to approve the agenda tonight, so do we want to add?
So just to clarify, the committee discussed it, and we did say we were going to move it. Councilmember Peterson is requesting to have this brought forward tonight and not wait for the full implementation of all the revisions to the personal policy.
Okay.
I say wait.
You say wait?
I say wait.
George? Steve?
I'm okay with going forward.
Doesn't matter either way. I mean, it's basically just changing language, so, I mean, I think we all came to conclusion that that, you know, the committee of all, but.
Okay. All right, well, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the item with the addition of K three. If anybody has a motion for that?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Peterson, second by Commissioner or Councilmember Peterson, second by Councilmember Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three-two to add that to the agenda. So the agenda is approved. We will move on to approval of the city council meeting minutes from November fifth, twenty twenty-five, city council budget work session meeting minutes. Any questions or changes to those guys? I'll entertain a motion on that.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Peterson, second by Councilmember Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Next, the November fifth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting minutes. Any questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Peterson, second by Councilmember Holmgren. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five-zero. The meeting minutes are approved. Next, we have the announcements. Parks and Recreation Board meeting Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. City offices will be closed Thursday, November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, and Friday, November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, on observance of Thanksgiving. City council meeting Tuesday, December second, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. The truth and tax track, truth and taxation presentation and public comment Tuesday, December second, twenty twenty-five during the city council meeting. And the Economic Development Authority Tuesday, December second, twenty twenty-five, immediately following the city council meeting. Are there any council committee reports this evening?
I have a fire district board meeting tomorrow, and I'm I don't have any committee report, but I want to give an update. They're still looking to change the joint powers agreement in more ways than we had a discussion about. My last conversation was that I would agree to it as long as we only use the language to charge for extraordinary fees. And we had a conversation about that, but. What they want to change right now, basically, I'm just going to read this to you really, it's simple. Under Minnesota State Statute four seven one, a joint powers agreement can only be exercised powers that are already common to all of its members. So if the, I'll use the chief as a fire marshal. Well, you're basically giving him police powers. And I really don't believe townships don't have police powers. So to give them the fire district police powers when a township doesn't have that power. That's just one small example, but I'm going to hold firm for now. I'd like to really look into this more before we go forward with that joint powers agreement. I'd like to table it for a few months at least. And on the budget, I'll I'll make one more note about this. You know, our original joint powers agreement intentionally created it created a cooperative fire department. And what they want to change doesn't give, doesn't give us any more power as far as township or or the city. The district already has all the authorities to provide fire and rescue service, hire managed managed firefighters, purchase equipment, maintain stations, plan capital needs, work with the Relief Association. Really, no real operational gaps exist that require C E O authority, fire marshal authority, ordinance authority, independent collection authority, expanded regulatory powers. These additions don't, these additions benefit the administration, not the taxpayers, not the firefighters, not the public. And and that's where I'm at right now, and when somebody convinces me different, then maybe I'll look at it a little different way. So and I'll do my best tomorrow to fight for that three-point-two percent. I don't believe we need that much of an increase in capital improvements, and if we do have to go with that three-point-two percent, I'd rather see them spend that money on a N O A, an organizational needs assessment. And really assess the fire district, our op, you know, the administration, our operational needs. I don't know if they've ever had an assessment. I know the League of Minnesota Cities has a free option, so does the fire marshal, State Fire Marshal Department. But to get a good one, you'd probably want an independent one. It'd be about twenty-five, forty K. Well, that's right about that number of that three-point-two percent. That's where I'd rather see that money go, other than into the capital improvements at least this year, so we can get on the right track, because I think we're on, we're just not quite on the right track over there. That's my opinion.
Would the L M C option be, and that's never been used by the fire district, maybe that would get you in the door, get you an idea of how bad you really need to spend money on an assessment?
Right, well, I would like to, you know, the chief says, the chief does have a lot on his plate, and I think I think we need more help over there. We haven't really had a full discussion on that, but he does so many administrative type things that are outside. We shouldn't be paying that type of pay scale to have that done. We should be able to hire somebody at a lower scale to do a lot of things that the chief is already doing. And lighten up his load so he can concentrate more on training and running fire stations and doing what chiefs do, other than having to do, be bogged down on so many administrative things. But I don't know if that discussion has been made in the past. Steve would might know that, but I think it's a future conversation that needs to be had, too. I think we're jumping the gun on too many things right now.
Okay.
That's the way I'm looking at it.
Any, you have more to add to that or any other council committee reports?
Many had was canceled due to illness of other members, so no report.
Okay.
I had a B M X Association meeting. Looks like they're going to be the number one track again in the country, so congratulations to them. They're just working on trying to figure out some of the concession issues. Trying to revamp their concession area, so they're still working on some ideas. That's about it.
What are the issues?
They have to update some stuff due to health codes that have been changed at the state, so.
Malaysian hoods and stuff or?
Yeah, just update upkeep to from the changes. So they're working on trying to strategize the different solutions to it, cheaper solutions, so.
Sounds good. And I will be attending the Arts and Science Academy Board meeting this month for the school committee. I'm looking forward to seeing how those meetings go, and we'll come with a report for that during our next city council meeting. And then I also got a letter from the League of Minnesota Cities, and I wanted to let everybody know that our Senate, State Senator Mark Coran was nominated or decided on as a legislature of distinction. On behalf of the league's eight hundred and forty-two member cities, I want to thank you for your efforts this past legislative session and to recognize Mark Coran as a League of Minnesota Cities twenty twenty-five legislature of distinction. L M C members know that to be as successful in serving our common constituents, state and city officials must work together as partners to reach solutions that meet the unique needs of rural, suburban, and urban communities across Minnesota. City leaders also understand that without the support of legislative leaders like Mark Coran, the state-local partnership would not be possible. And I would just like to give Mark a shout out. He is at so many community events. He's always interacting with with all of us, elected leaders, you know, constituents, everything. So he really does go far above and beyond his elected duties, and I really appreciate that and the leader, so I wanted to give him that shout out and let everybody know to thank him for his great service to our state and our community especially. So are there any other council committee reports tonight? Hearing none, we will move on to public hearings. Item J one, assessment hearing for Isani Hills Rehabilitation Project. Mr. Cook, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Let's see if Stephanie is telling the truth.
She failed.
Technology.
So this is the final assessment hearing for the Isani Hills Rehabilitation Project. We've been through the whole process here. I just have an eight-slide-type slideshow to to just kind of give everybody an update of what's all gone down, and then we can open up to the public hearing portion. And then we can determine if we're adopting the assessment and wrapping it up. So I guess we covered that. So here's the project area. We've already talked about this a few different times between, well, since January last year. We had an open house to kind of give everybody a chance to have an opinion of what's going to happen, what we're looking at, and get some questionnaires in. If you recall, we looked at those rain garden things from the Watershed District. We looked at some sidewalk infill ideas. We looked at some trail alternate things. And we looked at some traffic calming things. With that, we conducted a public hearing and approved the ad for bid back in April, awarded the bid in May, constructed the projects just in this last fall here, September to November. With just the final punch list items literally happening as we speak, and here we are wrapping it up. So the project ended up being a reclaim project where we ground up that pavement with the gravel underneath and put new pavement down. Replaced just the curb that was in failed condition, which, as we found out, was a significant amount, but we accounted for it and and got at least all the completely failed stuff out of there. We constructed some bed ramps along Whiskey Road to increase public safety, and we added some no parking and some striping on Dogwood, again, for some safety concerns like we've talked before. And then the Batumins Trail option, we bid out some alternates, and we elected to move forward with the the milling overlay option with a little just topsoiling and seeding along that trail. And as I have parentheses there, it wasn't part of the assessment. So final project. So the preliminary engineer's estimate in the report that we'd done with the the original meeting, the improvement meeting, we estimated the project was going to be one million sixty-five thousand dollars. With twenty-five percent of that being assessable, put it at two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars that we thought we'd assess. And dividing that by the assessable front footage, put the average estimated assessment at two thousand sixty-three dollars. So that's what we thought going into it. We moved forward with making the plans, made the project, bid it, constructed it. And now that it's wrapped up, we have actual incurred costs. And the bids came in about twenty percent below what we had estimated, so we got really good bids. If you recall, that's back when we awarded it. We we knew that. And then the new news is we came in about five percent under even that on our final project cost. So our total is about twenty-five percent under what our original feasibility report had estimated. So with that said, for this assessment-type thing, the assessable amount went from that estimated one million and change down to just shy of eight hundred thousand. Which then turned to our average assessment from the estimated over two thousand dollars down to that fifteen hundred and forty-three dollars, which is a five hundred and twenty dollars savings for those average assessments. So there's that summary at the bottom, and as I said, the the lower bids and that value engineering are keeping our quantities in check and making sure we we don't let any costs get out of control. So with that. Everybody got an individual letter that has their individual assessment. Those assessments were based on the adjusted front footage of each individual parcel. We'd made that assessment roll back on the original feasibility report, and nothing changed about the actual lengths of the project, so everybody's assessment. Frontage amounts didn't change, but that dollar amount on how it distributed ended up reducing from the original study estimated at twenty-three dollars and two cents a foot, and we ended up at seventeen dollars and twenty-one cents a foot. And so that's that five dollars and eighty-one cents less per foot of frontage of somebody's parcel. So in comparison of our last three assessment projects, that was technically eight and a half percent more than the South Brookview project, which was a very identical-type project. This one did have a little bit more curb to replace, as we probably saw as residents there. There's full runs of curb that had to get replaced. But if you factor in, you know, just inflation over the last three years, it pretty much came out almost identical to that assessment kind of level of cost per foot. And then you look at Main Street, that was the previous project that was assessed. That had whole sidewalk replacement, all walk replacement and road full section redone. And so those people were assessed at fifty-two dollars a linear foot. So so that was a significant sixty-seven percent less is this project than than what those people were assessed at. And then the Sixth Avenue, so right along this this project, and some of the people on our assessment roll actually had one side of their lot on the Sixth Avenue project. And that portion would have been assessed at thirty-two dollars and fifty-five cents back on that project. And so this project, you know, again, trying to value engineer out how to get the the benefit without the cost was about half that cost. So things went pretty well. So assessment payment options, everybody's letter laid out that they have from the date of recording that or approving this assessment, if that happens tonight, they'd have thirty days to fully pay off their assessment with no interest costs or in not having it applied to their their tax roll. Otherwise, they have a ten-year payment plan with a four percent interest rate that would basically just go on their their property taxes as a special assessment. Which that average person's tax rate would be about a hundred and ninety dollars a year for that ten years. There is a deferment option for people that are sixty-five years or older, retired due to disability or active military. That can prove that it's a hardship for them to be able to pay that hundred and ninety dollars or, you know, whatever their individual situation may be. So try to whip through that, because I'm assuming most of everybody's heard this kind of same presentation about the project, you know, at least three times, so. Now, if we open it up to the public hearing, then I'll step back up once that's closed.
Two questions.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, I don't think you actually mentioned the word that the payment would be deferred if if you're over sixty-five or a veteran. And it it'd be deferred till the time they would, what, sell their house or?
Sure, so so first off, the deferment would be they can ask to have it deferred to the council.
Right.
If there are those three scenarios and prove that it's a hardship for them. And then you, as the council, would can choose to approve that. It's not automatically deferred. They have to request it, and you guys can choose whether you choose to do it. Otherwise, the assessment policy then for closing that out has three or four or five even different scenarios, like if it goes into tax forfeiture, you sell it, you try and subdivide it. You know, a variety of different scenarios kind of trigger it being paid.
Could you also clarify that what happens if they wait? They have thirty days from the time we approve it to pay in full. So let's say two months down the line, they say, you know what, I I have the money now. I, you know, Christmas was good to me, and I'm going to pay it off. Can they pay it off, or are they held to the ten years?
So they can pay it off per year, but they have to pay the interest of that year that they pay it off in. And so essentially, if they don't pay it off in this first thirty. And so essentially, if they don't pay it off in this first 30 days, they pay it off January 2nd. They're essentially paying what it was going to be recorded on their taxes all the way through that year. So it wouldn't really make a difference if they paid it January 2nd or they have to do it by November 15th of each year.
Okay.
To, to get that year's payment, you know, recorded and canceled off the rest. You can do partial ones as well. You could just pay a couple at a time, you know, and that's all kind of, once this gets recorded to the county, it's kind of things that they'd have to kind of work out with.
Okay.
Just getting that piece taken care of with the county payment.
I just know a lot of people are listening, so I wanted you to give them options.
Sure. So yeah, so that letter, I did hear a few people that were a little confused because it has this November 15th listed, which they're like, well, this is happening three days after that. But that's essentially that date is for every future year. And they have this first 30 days essentially before we take this assessment roll and bring it to the county and say, okay, record it. So if you get it paid off before we go to the county and say, record it, well, then it never got on a tax roll. And you got to dodge any kind of, you know, getting it on your tax or interest that went with it.
Without a response or action taken, then just is going to automatically go to the pay annually and get added to our scroll?
Correct, yep.
I, I did just want to say that I did a lot of research on this. The average per foot assessment is generally around $37. We came in around $17 per, per foot. And I want to thank Jason and the council and everybody that was involved in that, trying to get these costs down. I mean, that's one thing that we, we pushed to try and be efficient. And we did that by bundling all these projects together, by only replacing the stuff that had to be replaced, by being flexible with the contractors and just getting better bids with more competition. And I think that's huge for our residents. You know, the average resident probably saved over $2,000 on this. And if we can continue that for everybody's assessment, that is, that's the goal. Keep people in their homes and give them the best services they can get for the most value. So thank you.
And Jason, could you go back to your slide and share when the letter went out, the notice to the residents of the actual amount that they owe? What date, what, did you state that was?
Oh, date wise, I guess I don't have it on here. I believe it was about a month ago, it was a little over three weeks ago.
Okay. So that would be the amount that is not an estimate, that is the exact amount that they would owe.
Correct, yeah. We made individual letters that had their individual parcel number, their individual owner name, their individual tax or assessed amount for that parcel, you know, very specifically made to each individual so that they would have the time to get here. And that's all actually part of the assessment statute on timelines that it had to have been delivered two or three weeks beforehand, and we got it out at least a week before even that to give people a chance to look it over, contact us, try and get answers on questions and, and get things addressed.
Sounds good. All right, well, we will open it up for the public hearing. If there's anybody that'd like to come, come forward and ask questions or make comments, you're welcome to come forward and just state your name and address for the record. Come on up, thank you for coming in.
My name's Ryan Tulp, 600 Dogwood Street. See, I was just curious on the painting of the, the parking and all that on that street. Said it was for safety and whatnot, but all the mailboxes are, you can't even check your mail without being in a driving lane. So just kind of curious on that aspect of it, how we came about to decide where to park, not park, painted lines, that kind of stuff.
Sure. Sure. So we'll have Mr. Cook answer that question.
Sure. So, so that specific stretch of Dogwood, we've kind of been through quite a few different iterations of discussions. That was something that we brought to that open house and had some questionnaires on. We tried to evaluate different ways to do public safety, but also figure out how to do some traffic calming, see what we could do about slowing down vehicles. You know, we've, we've now posted it with 25 mile an hour speed limit signs. We evaluated, you know, was asked to do speed bumps, it was asked to do curb bump outs. And what we found, and our traffic engineers recommended, was to stripe narrower street lanes with fatter fog lines, white outer line, to try and make it feel more restricted. And the original concept was actually to center that road down the middle with those fog lines, which there's not enough room for parking on both sides and two lanes of traffic. So would have done no parking on both sides of the street. But in one of the final reviews, we determined that there was enough room to shift it one way and allow parking on one side. And council didn't want to cut off everybody's parking. And so we went with that solution of being able to get parking on one side. The safety element of it is when it's not wide enough to be able to have two parking cars and two lanes of traffic at one spot, you literally have to take turns to try and get through. As well as if you already have a speeding issue, if you have cars parked along both sides of the road and a kid tries to come out in front of you, they, you have that much less room to try and react to them while you're also trying to dodge the other cars when there's not enough lane width. And so with the given width, we either had to do no parking on one side or both. You know, just to, to try and get a calming element and a safety element in there. You, you do have a point on the mailbox situation. From the face of curb to the stripe, I believe it should be at least two feet. And, and maybe we got to get some, you know, checks on that, but even two feet, I understand is, you know, is tight. And I guess, you know, we can, we can look into what's a, what is striped out there on that point. I mean, that, that isn't a, that is a fair comment. I know I've heard some comments about a few mailboxes having been damaged as well, that we have a punch list going to try and fix. So if anything happened to them being in the wrong spot, will be, or you know, not set properly, we'll be fixing that as well. But I guess that's about all I got on it at the moment.
And I, I can add a little bit of something to that. We did, there was another road that we had a similar issue where there, it wasn't wide enough to have two cars parked on each side. And we did do parking on the mailbox side, but then you had issues with people parking in front of people's mailboxes. So then we decided in this one, we actually changed that one to parking opposite the mailbox. This one, we decided parking again opposite the mailbox because otherwise people park in front of your mailbox and then you have even more issues. So hopefully it's supposed to be a 25 mile per hour zone. You know, a, a lot of people, like myself included, we, you're driving into the other lane to get your, your mail, you know. So it's, it's a residential street and people should be cognizant of that. But we've been trying to do anything we can to slow people down. And that was kind of the intent and make it as safe for, for everybody as we could, try and find the middle ground. And, but yeah, I, I understand the, the concern about getting your mail, you know, if people are speeding. And I encouraged, in the, in the last meeting, we talked about this today. I encourage you, if, if there's, you know, constant speeders, get down their license plate number, call them in and our guys can look for them. Just try and stay vigilant on that, you know, have conversations with your neighbors. You know, we, we can't be there for all this stuff, but at some point, people have to be accountable for their actions, so.
Just a, on the, how did we decide how wide to make the parking side of the road? Because just a guy who drives a full-size pickup, there's, if I park on the curb, basically in the grass, my truck would still be hanging out into the driving lane. How did, is it just because of the width of the road, we needed certain distances or?
Sure.
How do we?
Yeah. So, so on that, that's why I referenced that two feet that I was thinking from the, the one side, the mailbox side. You're supposed to have two feet from like a curb to your driveline. For it's called a reaction distance, is a little safety element for vehicles. And then the two lanes are 11-foot lanes. And then a parking lane has to be seven feet wide. And we're essentially how wide this road is, once you do all that math, it's pretty much how wide it is. And so, so essentially it is as wide as we could make it by making the lanes and that little reaction area kind of as small as we could and still just barely make the cut. And, you know, if anything, you know, we earlier were getting comments that people may want parking on both sides back and the whole, you know, taking turn situation going again. You know, with a vehicle parked, you know, at least up against the edge of that fog line. I mean, that's significantly better than being parked halfway into a driveline where cars are having to take turns. So, you know, I would still say it's a better situation, even if you are kind of on the white line, you know, as parked over as you can.
I appreciate the clarification on that. Just one more thing and then I'll leave you guys alone. How did we decide which curb was to be taken and which curb was not to be replaced?
Sure. So, so we basically had to establish a, a threshold that was going to be, we don't take everything, but we don't, you know, leave completely crumbled away curb. So what we kind of determined was, well, what we've already done in the past on, on South Brookview as well, we've established kind of a baseline in the city at least of a level of deterioration on the lipper curb, like along the, the pavement edge, if that's crumbled too far, and then if the joint is open too far, to be able to have the water convey without going directly into the wide open crack of a, what we had determined was about a three-inch kind of gap on the lipper curb. Kind of established our baseline. And then if there's obviously like large chunks out, vertical offset settlements, you know, trapped water, we'd go catch those. And, and we basically had to take, I believe my inspectors took three different rounds to try and get the worst curb and then size up how much quantity we used and then determine how much was left and to do another pass to try and add the, the next worst curb that was questionable and get that. And then once we kind of got to the running out of quantity, we kind of determined, okay, what, when is it good enough to be able to last until the next time we're going to be redoing this road? Milling overlay specifically, which is about a 20-year game plan. And so, so what we believe we've left, you know, and it's obviously individual opinion as you go, is curb that we believe can make it that 20 years. And, and get rid of all the stuff that, you know, we had entire blocks that were shot. And so when you compare one street that still has quite a bit left, it might look like, oh, there's some bad curb here. But if you think of how bad everything else was, it's, I feel like we got to a good point where we have stuff that's going to make the life expectancy we're trying for.
So you didn't take like back a curb into consideration on a lot of it? You were more worried about the drain flow?
Only drain flow, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, performance, not appearance.
Okay. Got you. That was just kind of my biggest question coming from a, I do asphalt reclamation in Milling.
Oh, oh.
Actually, the company that did the project.
Oh, okay.
So I was just kind of looking as the project's getting done and the whole process and talking to the foremans and everything about it. And I'm like, I see X amount of driveways that are way worse than what was taken out.
So driveways, we weren't ever considering. The only driveways they got fixed were because the curb was so bad. We didn't, we didn't go after a driveway at all.
No, no, the curb on the driveways is what I'm referring to.
Okay.
So I was just kind of, I was giggling and talking to the foreman as the project was happening. Like, okay, why did they decide to do this and not this? And he, he couldn't get a clear answer from, I don't know who was above him.
Sure, sure.
I was just figured I'd ask the question while I was here tonight.
Sure.
Thank you for asking the question. And a lot of those things, it's, curbing is extremely expensive. And these projects, you know, we don't want to overtax our residents by having to rip out stuff that still functions. And we would have seen a much higher number if we, if we had. So just try and keep it responsible and how a household will spend their money. They're not going to go replace a perfectly driving and capable truck with a brand new one just because. So it's kind of the, the motto we've taken here. So I appreciate the input on that. Anybody else for public comment tonight? Come on forward, just state your name and address for the record, please. Is this regarding the Isanty Hills Rehabilitation? Okay, perfect, sounds good, thank you.
Okay, so my name is Janet Shock. I'm from Athens Township, but I'm moving to Isanty. So as a veteran, I was listening to your deferral part. So if anybody has any questions on how to do that paperwork or how the process goes as a disabled veteran, I can help you get that done. There's also some other tax benefits that you can qualify for if you are over 70% disabled. So I just want to let people know that they can reach out to me. I don't mind sharing my phone number, so it's 612-708-9469. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and distinguished guests.
Thank you, thank you for coming in. Any, anybody else for the public comment during the public hearing here?
Mayor and council, I do have two. One of them is from Ms. Mahoney. She spoke earlier at Committee of the Hole and asked that I bring forward, she's at 809 Dogwood. She had concerns over the integrity of the work of the curb line, which I know is going to be addressed as part of the, the punch list and warranty issues. And she also had concerns regarding parking on both sides, because similar to what the earl, earlier gentleman stated, believes that there should be parking a lot on both sides because of safety and people speeding through. Another statement that is from a resident on Dogwood is Mr. Miscavige. He had concerns regarding the short amount of time, the 30 days to pay off the assessment with no interest. He thought that given this time of year, close to the holiday, he thought that it would be easier for residents to have at least six months to pay the deferral or to, to pay the assessment off before incurring any interest charges.
When would the, when would the assessment start? If, if we didn't change anything, when would the assessment start?
They have 30 days to pay before they would be charged any interest. After the 30 days, it gets sent over to the county and they will be incurring interest.
And I will mention the interest there is, it's 4%, which is our, it uses our two-way rating as a city to get us the 3% rate plus a 1% service charge. And that is extremely low. If you were to go in the private market right now, it'd be twice that. So that's something good that we can, you know, sort of ease a little bit of that burden. And we did, we've told everybody about this since March. So it's been, you know, they'll have eight months essentially to, you know, come up with this money. Obviously, it's sometimes it's a hardship and it's, it's easy to understand how that could be. But we, we have this policy and we have to stick to the policy that everybody else has always, always abided by. Otherwise, it's considered favoritism.
The reason I say that is if the job was done in, say, July completed, that assessment wouldn't start until the next tax, tax assessment, period. So technically, their assessment wouldn't start until April, am I right?
Yeah, that is correct. It will be payable with the first round of 2026 taxes. It will be on the property tax statements for next year.
And Jason had said?
The interest would still be due then after that 30 days. For example, with your July, in August, then they would start accruing interest, but they still would have through the end of the year to pay it directly to the city before going to the county.
So Jason, hypothetically, if someone were to not make it to 30 days and say they paid all of it in June, they would pay one year of interest, correct? So on $190, 4%, you're roughly talking $9 of interest.
Well.
Is that correct?
No, that's that amortization math. And so like, you know, the first one of these is probably, I don't know.
Bigger.
We'll let Nick pull that one.
Yeah, what's our average, 1,500?
Yeah. Six months be.
So it's going to be around $60 in interest for that first year, so.
Okay.
So $30 for half a year.
It'll apply the whole year as soon as it's assessed to the county, yeah.
So if, if somebody could pay it off next year, the interest charge would on average be roughly $60? Okay.
That would be all, if they made that payment the next year, that would be roughly the total interest that they paid on their assessment then.
Sure. For an average. Okay. Any other public comment? If not, we will close the public hearing. Thank you, everybody, for the input. We really appreciate it. The board here, you guys have any questions, concerns, feedback based on public comment or any of the numbers provided?
I'd just like to re-add that, so they would have until November 15th of next year to pay it off in full and only have paid one year of interest charges and nothing beyond that.
Yes.
So how would it work if you, let's say you paid half in the first 30 days?
Which you're allowed to do.
Yep. But are you going to be assessed at $60? If the interest, if that's the case, if you paid half of it?
The interest would be $30.
That, that's how I think, but that doesn't mean that's how this thinks.
Good question. That would be how that would work. It'll be if someone makes a partial payment, it'll only be the remaining balance that would get assessed to the county.
Well, that's, want to make sure it's. Want to make sure that's clarified. I mean. I mean.
Great point.
I, it's, it's, you know, you look at it, I, I, I don't know people's finances, and it's not my business. Myself, I would probably make it, either pay it in full within the first thirty days, or half of it, and then, you know, the other half as soon as I had the money, type of thing. So, I mean, that's why I bring that point up. I mean, we're not talking eighteen thousand dollars, we're talking eighteen hundred.
This is an unbelievably low assessment, it's great that we were able to make this happen. It's, I remember we had an assessment on my parents' house, I was twelve years old, it was eleven thousand dollars. And I remember that one, it's like, oh, man, you know, and then I called around and talked to probably like twenty people on this, and it seemed to be the four or five thousand dollar mark seems to be the average. And we came in at eighteen, or fifteen hundred dollars, it's unbelievable, so. Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
Do we need a motion on this, Ms. Wood? I make a motion to adopt with the assessment and move forward.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundin, second by Councilmember Peterson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, we will move on to J two, assessment hearing for certification of delinquent utilities. Is that Nick?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. This is the delinquent utility assessment role that will be going to the county in December to be assessed on the twenty-twenty-six taxes for the listed properties. No public hearing requests were received by the November tenth deadline, so unless anyone else is here, I don't believe we will have any public comments on this.
Sounds good.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yep.
Are you gonna send out a final letter before December's?
Um, they already received the final letter, so they're aware of their delinquent amounts. It listed on that letter what the process would be, so they knew when they were able to make the payment by, and without any further notification, that that would be going to the county in December.
I just looked at one of them, sixty-two cents, it's gonna cost us more in mail.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll clean up this list a little bit, too, for what we will and will not assess. There'll probably be some sort of dollar amount that we'll put on there, where we will just leave it on the current account.
I mean, I see some that are thirty-eight hundred dollars. I mean, if this is just assessment for sewer and water, that's gone on way too long, it should've never went that long.
Is, I know we adopted this policy, is this the first year we're implementing it?
No, we've, we've done this more than once.
Yeah, the delinquent utilities have gone to the county each year. We did have a change in our shut-off policy that maybe was.
That would be the shut-off policy.
So yeah, our shut-off policy has since changed, so that's why some of these numbers are bigger, because we are not having those consequences for those delinquent balances. So it's allowing people to rack up larger charges than we've seen in the past.
I think, I think we should maybe, maybe change that policy to X amount of dollars, so it doesn't get to thirty-eight hundred dollars? That's a lot. I mean, sixty-two cents, I'm not gonna do it. Or here, I'll give you the sixty-two cents, I don't want to waste any more of our taxpayers' money on that. But thirty-eight hundred dollars has gone on way too long. So he hasn't, at this point, they have no, I mean, they don't care, because you're not gonna shut me off.
Yep, and we still are applying penalties to those accounts each month that they're not paying their bill. And then there's also an additional thirty-dollar charge for us processing this assessment to the county, too. So there is still financial consequences to them not paying, so that's the current thing to encourage residents to pay. But if we do want to revisit that policy, that is something that we can discuss if you guys as a council would like to discuss.
I mean, if you look at an average sixty dollars a month sewer and water charge, normal house, thirty-eight hundred dollars is sixty-three months.
Five years. It should only cover the previous twelve months, so I would guess in that scenario that this is a very high water usage household or business in the city.
Okay.
Because it would've gotten wiped down to zero last year with the same certification process.
All right, well, we will open the public hearing, in case there's anybody here from the public that wanted to come forward on this. Okay, we will close the public hearing. Further discussion, or?
I'm surprised nobody showed up, there's a lot of people on this.
Yeah, I thought there was only one page, and it was like.
That's three pages.
I thought somebody would show up and at least give some kind of argument or hardship story.
I motion to approve with, moving forward with this.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundin, second by Councilmember Heman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Uh, next, we will move on to business item K one, resolution to consider approving the determination of Minnesota paid leave law percentage for employee and employer. Ms. Wood or Nick?
All right, so paid leave's back again. Only change in this resolution from what we saw the previous time is that we added in a line about sun life to clarify that they are bonded and insured. So we will continue moving forward with using them to handle our paid family and medical leave, to do the administering of that plan and do our coverage for anyone that is going on leave there. So any other questions on this?
Nope.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Lundin, second by Councilmember Peterson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Motion carries four one. Item K two, resolution to consider approving the final plat for Fairway Greens North fourth addition.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In twenty-twenty-one, the city council approved a preliminary plat and planned unit development for the Fairway Greens North development, subject to specific conditions outlined in the authorizing resolution. Today, before you, we have the fourth addition, the final plat presented by J P B Land LLC. And it will consist of forty-six single-family residential lots. This is a final plat submission, it's consistent with the lot configuration, internal street layout, and overall design approved by the council in twenty-twenty-one, and no significant variances or design changes are being requested. Staff has reviewed the final plat documentation and confirms that it complies with all relevant ordinances and all outstanding conditions set forth in that approval. And although it wasn't recommended, we did have the planning commission review this one last time, since it's been a while since they reviewed it, and they did recommend approval tonight at their earlier meeting. And staff recommends approval of this, and the resolution is attached and states all the conditions, including all comments and concerns, and the city engineer's memo dated, memos dated September twenty-sixth and October twenty-eighth will be met, and we don't see any reason why they're not, they're working through them with us right now.
Did you change that from fifteen to eighteen hundred?
Yep, that was on a previous thing, so it is eighteen hundred. And the development agreement will be coming at a later date, so expect to see that at an upcoming meeting.
And you said that it was not, you say you had said recommended to go to planning commission, but it was not required to go to planning commission, correct? But we did it as a, every, get more eyes on, okay, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, we just did it as a way to really maintain awareness about this project for everybody, just as if, as we felt like it was the right thing to do, just because of the length of time between the original preliminary plat. They have been following the rules for that originally laid out, and they've been taking away at this development every year, annually, and so they've been progressing forward as is allowed.
Okay, sounds good, and planning commission recommended it, was it seven zero?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve with all the corrections and yada, yada, yada.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundin, second by Councilmember Peterson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Uh, next, business item K three, I don't remember, what did we title that one? Just personnel policy?
It's to remove possession or use of a dangerous weapons section and definition of employee personnel policy.
And we talked about this in the previous meeting, so is there any other questions or concerns, comments from the board? Let entertain a motion, then?
Motion to amend the policy and remove it, or amend, yeah. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, second by Councilmember Maholgren, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or Heman, Heman, sorry. All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four one on that. Uh, next, we will go to the consent agenda. Are there any concerns or items that anybody would like pulled out of the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Lundin, second by Councilmember Peterson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero, the consent agenda is approved. Any other communications or questions from the board or staff?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion adjourned by Councilmember Lundin, second by Councilmember Peterson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero, we are adjourned, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming in.
Say, ma'am, thank you for your service.